Ready? Seven o'clock, we have a quorum. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have meeting, approval of the minutes for nine-four. Oh, excuse me, October first, opening day deer season.
Want a motion?
Yes, I would.
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Got a motion by Tom to approve the minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Marsha. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Five-oh. Okay, real quickly, for those of you that have come for the Danville Christian Church property, we are only annexing it into the town tonight. We are not doing anything with zoning. So if you're here for zoning for this particular piece of property, not going to happen tonight. You're more than welcome to stick around. We love to have a crowd, okay? But there is not going to be any zoning on this property tonight. Is everybody okay with that? Everybody understand? Okay, just want to make sure. So we have a public hearing on ordinance seventeen, two thousand eighteen, Danville Christian Church annexation. Since it's a public hearing, I'll close this meeting. I'll open up the public hearing. Anybody want to talk about this? Staff, you want to start?
Just the statutory public hearing that's required.
Okay. Anybody like to talk about annexing this into the town? Come up to the podium, state your name, and let us know your concerns. Anybody? Okay, going fast. All right, I'm going to, whoa, well, come on up. Your name and what do you do?
Yeah, it's like you go out. All right, Steve Johnson, former school teacher, thirty-eight years. I'm here representing the church. The big thing for us right now, for me, would be we need housing for young people. And I came to Danville, I, first year, I made seven thousand dollars and two hundred dollars of spore. My first house was twenty-five thousand dollars, which is equivalent to a hundred and fifty thousand today. Could I afford a four-hundred-thousand-dollar house? No. Could I afford a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar house? No. I ended up building my house and with, and putting a lot of my own blood, sweat, and tears in it to afford it. So my, my comment to you is we need housing for young people. Our, our young policemen coming right out, they can't afford a three- or four-hundred-thousand-dollar house. We need housing for young people that can afford it. It brings in revenue to our schools. We're desperate for that. Mike, as you know, we, we're losing teachers because they go elsewhere for, for better money. And so we need, we need that revenue to come in, hopefully to keep some of our teachers because the Mike Nielsen's and the Doc Hammond's and the Steve Johnson's are few and far between anymore. They go elsewhere. So you do need someplace for young people to live, single-parent homes, you know, single-parents, you know, people working two jobs, trying to make ends meet. They need a house other than an apartment. So this probably should be saved for the zoning part of it, but I do want to speak on behalf of the church and behalf of our community for that. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Okay. I'll close that. The public hearing on ordinance seventeen, two thousand eighteen. Laura, what, what are we going to do now?
That's all that's necessary for the, for this step in the process.
Okay, thank you. I do need to say, make one statement here, real quick, that we did have a work-study meeting at five o'clock this evening to, to investigate an opportunity for Public Works. And that occurred at five o'clock this evening. Anything else on that, or is that sufficient? Gary, does that work? Okay, good. All right, back to our regular scheduled program, resolution fifteen, two thousand eighteen, Danville Christian Church fiscal plan. Laura?
If you recall, at our last meeting, I asked for permission for expenditures for Mba to pay for this fiscal plan and the, for the other properties. Those came in well under budget, I'll just let you know, thirty-five hundred dollars. This fiscal plan is for the property, church property, the twenty-one acres. It's resolution form, it's just a study of what the proposed expenses will be for providing services to that location and then revenues that we may receive. And that was over a three-year.
Okay. This is the Danville Christian Church land, super voluntary annexation, the Aladoshes. What's, what's the wishes of the council for resolution fifteen?
I move that we approve resolution fifteen, two thousand eighteen, the fiscal plan for the Danville Christian Church annexation.
Second.
Motion to approve resolution fifteen and a second. Any other further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution number fifteen passes. They have been super voluntary annexed. Give me, there's just a lot of paperwork we need to shuffle through here. Get to our next, resolution number fourteen. On the Coliseum fiscal plan, Laura? There it is.
So this fiscal plan is for the Coliseum annexation, another super voluntary, fifty-five acres. Normally, we would have done this at the last meeting, but we're being analyzed at the same time for adoptions.
All right, resolution number fourteen, David N. and Jane A. Coliseum, super voluntary annexation. What's the pleasure of the council? Do we annex?
I move that we approve resolution fourteen, two thousand eighteen, the Coliseum fiscal plan.
I've got a motion by Marsha and a second by Jim and further discussion. All those in favor of resolution number fourteen signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution is passed. Ordinance number twenty. Oh, I'm sorry, fourteen. Ordinance fourteen, thank you. An ordinance of the town, uh, town council of the town of Danville, Indiana, annexing territory to the town of Danville, placing the same within the corporate boundaries thereof and making the same a part of the town.
That before the annexation? Same fifty-five acre, genses up for it.
All right, council?
I'd make a motion to approve ordinance fourteen, two thousand eighteen, Coliseum annexation.
And a motion by Mr. Nguyen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Pato. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ordinance number fourteen is approved. Ordinance number twenty, an ordinance of the town of Danville, rezoning certain territory to a planned unit development. Laura?
Just briefly, this is a rezoning request coming before you. I'd had a public hearing in front of the Plan Commission a couple of weeks ago. Originally zoned R-two, and the developers coming in asking for it to be rezoned to PUD. And in your packet is a favorable recommendation from the Plan Commission.
Mr. President, if I may, I am representing this developer, and we're happy to answer any questions or give you a brief description of the project if you'd like. You, you may have a copy of the ordinance and everything you need in your packets, and you may not have any questions, but if you do, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Mrs. Elliott?
What other favor of it, changing it from R-two to PUD, what enhancements is going to be in the property and the plan to?
This, so, your PUD ordinance lists a handful of items that describe what properties would qualify for a PUD, like why use a PUD. One of those is that you have multiple uses around you, and you're kind of stepping down and stepping up, buffering different multiple land uses. So immediately to our west is the East Main Apartments. Immediately to the south is industrial-zoned storage units. Immediately across the street is a good deal of industrial. Immediately to the east, or I'm sorry, the west, which is right along three hundred east, is about four to six homes. And then across, right across the street from that is Galecrest, which has a local business up the front, along thirty-six, or I'm sorry, Main Street. And so it's just a hodgepodge of uses. And if you'll allow me to get to my notes here, so one of the purposes of a PUD is to, in fact, create or fit that kind of multiple-use scenario. Secondly, a PUD is utilized when you have natural features that you want to preserve. So there is a glorified ditch slash creek that literally bisects this property about two-thirds of the way north, and it's very wooded. There's woods all around the, the, most of the perimeter, largely around the northern perimeter. All of that will be preserved, other than, you know, dead brush and dead trees and that sort of thing, those will be cleaned out. So this developer's expertise is trees and landscaping. They had their own tree farm, thousands of trees, for many, many years. I'm sure those of you who have been here longer than ten years will easily remember the Cranfils. They, they're the ones that did the haunted hayride in Brownsburg for years and years and years. So they will preserve the trees that they know can last, know will do, know will do well. You can see by this where all the trees are, and then once she expands this, you're going to get to see where the ditch is. So we are working around all these features, preserving all along that, that creek, and then all the trees around the perimeters. You can see multiple ponds there. The zoning, your zoning ordinance requires twenty-five percent open space. We have over thirty-four percent open space, open space. So a, a good deal. So obviously, we're clustering our homes on the south and in the north. And so this property was just, it fits exactly what a PUD is meant for. You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Make a motion to approve ordinance twenty, two thousand eighteen, Camden Creek, PUD.
Second. I've got a motion by Mr. Nguyen and a second by Mr. Stevens. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance number twenty carries. All right, item F, an agreement for scope of work for the water and wastewater master plan. Ken Elliott, Jerry Crisp, and Jimmy Russell. Jimmy? I could tell Jimmy wasn't here, I couldn't hear him.
Good evening. I did speak with Jimmy Russell, Jerry Crisp, Tom Danville. Mr. Elliott, Banning, met with myself, Jimmy, Jerry, and Laura to fine-tune the scope of services. Banning came up with a lump sum cost for that work, and their fee schedule is attached. So basically, it's the same, you know, what, this project's not specific to a cost, it's their hourly rate to do the job. And we, we lined out the scope of service. So hopefully, the scope of service looks thorough to you guys. I've double-checked it, it looks very good. I had a verbal conversation with Jimmy. It does fit within his work next year, well-maintenance, plant maintenance, and doing some main expansion. I don't know if you talked to Jimmy or not on the, the cost. Yeah, I was in meetings with Jimmy all day, so that's why I had the chance.
Okay, so we're looking at a lump sum payment of a hundred and ninety-eight thousand, five-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And from what funding source?
Myself, I have funding in professional services, and I'm going to use half of my annual replacement fund.
And this is okay with you?
Yes, I met with, spoke with Jerry and met with Jimmy.
Both of them are okay with the funding? Happy with this plan?
Yes, sir. We don't want to skimp on a twenty-year plan, but we were very thorough in the scope. It worked out really good.
Any other questions? What's the pleasure of the council? Do you agree to this agreement?
Take a motion, or what are you looking for?
It'll be a motion.
Take a motion?
Mr. President, make a motion that we approve the scope of services offered by Banning Engineering for the lump sum fee of one ninety-eight, five seventy-two.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second for the professional services, a hundred ninety-eight thousand, five hundred and seventy-two, with the money coming from professional services and?
Replacement fund.
Replacement fund. Further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Thank you.
Lofton? Hold a little issue here, eh?
I assume that you have the, there that shows the post, the pre and the post numbers. Do you have any questions on understanding what that says? You should have on the front side, it should be, you know, a spore count, and that's broken down into what type of mold. I guess I should say why I'm up here, is we, we had to remediate some mold in the police department. There was a, a couple of concerns, it was brought to my attention, so we had somebody come in and test the air, test the whole office, and it came back into two areas that really were high. There was a hundred and forty thousand mole spores in the air in a cubic yard. So either, either these have been here for a while, or they, I don't really, I haven't figured out what the smoking gun is. But we immediately took action. That day, I spoke with Gary and said, hey, we need to evacuate the police department right now. So once we find those numbers, we have to act. And that's why I asked him to evacuate the police department. The next day, they came in and started remediating the mold. The following day, they were complete, and they were back in their offices, and the mold count went from a hundred and forty thousand to five hundred and forty. So it was a significant drop. But that, that area of the building is going to need continue, continued attention. The next step, I'll be going upstairs in where the school is. I have contacted the state, the indoor air quality department. I didn't know there was an indoor air quality department, but they will come out and do some more testing. It, it takes a long time for the state to do it. With learning about mold in this situation, I found there's a lot of, a lot of differing opinion. I know professionally that mold has not caused any deaths, but there are complications that can come from mold that can cause problems. So the health and the safety of the employees in this building, I take very seriously, and that's why I asked Mr. Aiken to evacuate that. We immediately acted, and the numbers prove that we've got it down to intolerable levels. The tolerable levels, the levels that we have are not from the United States of America. They're from the European Union. The United States of America does not have analysis for mold. There are no numbers that say this number's bad, this number's good. Yeah, because it's such, it's a really tough thing to man, there's mold outside. You know, if we did a spore count outside, like, you know, watching the news this evening, our mold count outdoor in the air was moderate today, when it's forty degrees to start out. Usually, you have high temperatures and moisture, that's the creation for mold. So there's no, there's no smoking gun here. All I can tell you is that we tested the clerk treasurer's office, theirs was good. We tested the, uh, Hargrave gym, because there were some concerns. Once, once we found out there was a problem at the, the police department, those came back as low. There wasn't a spore count, we didn't do an air test, but we will continue, I, I say we, I will continue to test the building to make sure that the health and safety of the employees are number one. They have to be.
Thank you.
And I had no idea this was going on, but once we found out, me and Mr. Aiken acted right away.
What alerted you to having?
There was some health issues with the police chief. He had, the, the building, we, when I first came here, the building had new controls installed. When we installed those controls, and, and I've learned this over the course of five years, this wasn't like I have all this wealth of knowledge about this building, because I went to school here, and I didn't really worry about mold, water, windows, anything. So when I came back here, the building needed attention, and it's going to continue to need attention. This, the building is old, we have a really old building, but even the newer section needs work. Windows, I mean, the list is a mile long, but you have to chew away at this one piece at a time, or otherwise, you know, it's, it's, it's a bank breaker. Not because it's a bad building, but it just needs continued maintenance. So the old part of the building is made of all brick. I don't want to drag this out and get too detailed, but I want you to understand why the building, why we had this problem, and I think it's a combination of humidity, high temps, and we have brick walls, and those brick walls absorb, absorb moisture, and it can't get out. So it stays in that brick. This part of the building's a little bit different. We have a thermal envelope, we have a vapor barrier, and we have all kinds of things. It's more newly constructed than the old part of the building. So needless to say, it's a continued, the, the alert is good simply for the fact that I got educated on mold. But other than that, we can find some deficiencies in the building that we need to, to maybe upgrade, and we need to manage a little bit better. And that's the moisture.
I think it's important to state, too, it was, wasn't just perceived in the air, it was surface mold that you found on the furniture.
There was, there was visible, you know, the, what the main thing is, is, I'm glad you brought that up, the main thing is, is not the mold on the surface. Because unless you, unless you scratch that and, you know, inhale it, it really doesn't harm anything. But the spores that are released into the air, that's what can be harmful. And the air count was a hundred and forty thousand in a cubic yard. And there was, you know, there's two different types, you know, there, there are long names, but they're on that list. And the colatusporium, I think that's how it's pronounced, is really harmful, can be. And it all depends on the person. I've been breathing that mold for five years. I don't have a problem. But if you have somebody that has sinus or respiratory problems, it can really bug them. So, you know, I don't know, you know, other than that, I mean, it's all, it's all dependent on the perfect storm and whether you have somebody that's really susceptible to that kind of mold. But the bottom line is, we got it cleaned up, it's down to five hundred and forty. We'll continue to do other areas. I've already told Mr. Aiken that we need to do every room in this building. We have to have it tested, because we have to know. You know, because if we, if we find those numbers are bad, we got to act on them, because that's not something that we can mess with. I mean, it's kind of a, a big deal, but like I said, they can use scare tactics when they come in to do mold tests, and I ask them not to do that. Don't make comments, just do the test, give us the numbers, and we'll make a decision. And that's what we did. So the numbers came back, we acted. And right now, I don't know of any bad issues that we have, but we may find some when we do our testing.
When would you do the testing?
It takes the state six to eight weeks to even get here, because I've asked the state to come in, they'll do it for free. And if we find evidence of, that we need to act sooner, we will have to have a private company come in here and test it, and we'll have to pay them, it's five hundred dollars to do four tests. So the, the cost?
Four tests in one room of four tests?
Four different tests anywhere you want them. You can do four air tests, which is what I recommend after doing this, because that's what we breathe. You know, we need to do air tests every time, because that's going to tell us what's in the air. A lot of that was visible on the sides, a lot of it looked like dust, but it's, it's really, it's really a tough thing to, because you have differing opinions on A, you know, is it harmful, and B, what are the numbers?
When the state comes out, will they do every room, or will they again?
I was told they would do every room. What they will do is they will take a sample. It takes six to eight weeks, because this is what I understand, and I could be wrong. If, if I find out differently, I'll let you know. But what they'll do is they'll come in and gather some air test, they will go back into a lab, and they will grow that mold, or they will attempt to. When they grow that mold, they will then be able to tell us what type it is, whether it's harmful, and, you know, actions moving forward.
How much, how much time will you get from the state? I mean, you told me six or eight weeks.
A week.
Okay, and my concern is CNC.
Yeah.
I mean, if, obviously, it falls over Christmas break, that's great.
Well, one of the benefits we have right now, and I didn't mention this, is in the fall, you will not have, you're going to have, you're going to have grass, you're going to have the leaves, you're going to have some stuff in the air, but usually mold in the wintertime is not active. You know, it takes certain things. Now, that doesn't mean that it's not here, but that just means our, our chances of it getting airborne are lessened. So the plan is, is to go ahead and do the school over Christmas break, whether it's the state, or whether we hire somebody, because to me, that's the number-one focus right now, is to make sure those classrooms are going to be safe. You know, really, I mean, that's what it comes down to. The rooms that they're in right now, they don't have a bad odor. We do have what's called an O-three. It's, it's an oxygen that will clean the air, those are being put in. They have dehumidifiers, there's dehumidifiers in the police department. I can tell you, because I came in, I come in here at eight o'clock at night, and I empty those, and I check the humidity, and it's high. But, you know, you know, when you air-condition a space, that's supposed to remove the humidity out. And it's not removing enough. We may have sixty percent humidity outside, or it may be a hundred percent when it's raining, and we have seventy to eighty percent in those rooms. And it's basically confined to two rooms, and they're actually the room that the chief is in. And that reason is because it's on the dark end of the, you know, it's on the backside, it never sees sun, there's tree cover, it's damp. So there's a number of things that I can do that can lessen the chances, and that's what I'll do. So, but the, the school, we will probably do that before the state gets here. We just need to know. Since we know we've had an issue, we need to kind of be aggressive in making sure there's not, it's not anywhere else. But that's what the request is, is basically to pay the company that we've already had come in here and mediate, so.
All right.
I would move that we approve the expenditure request for sixteen thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars and forty-seven cents for the mold remediation in the police department for it to come out of hope.
All right, we've got a motion for mold remediation. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any other further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pay the bill. Thank you, Barry.
Thank you, Barry.
Well, all right, let's see. Redevelopment Commission requests for funds. Mr. Comer, here.
No, Ben isn't with us tonight, but there are other members of the RDC that are here.
I think I'm the de facto representative. I'm Tracy Schaefer, a member of the RDC, and also superintendent for Danville Schools. And I think it was a couple of months ago, the RDC made a request, or I believe it was a $50,000 request in '18 from Host Fund, and I believe $100,000 in '19, if my memory serves me well. Just back before you this evening, just following up on that request.
All right, Mr. Aiken.
First treasurer and I, I didn't, we can go back in to the Host Fund, I described to you tonight, discretionary fund, you just took, put it below what we could offer to the REO Commission. I think working together at Host Fund, we identified additional funds, 1,000, to transfer that 50,000 into the REO Commission.
Jenny?
Yes, I agree.
The 50's okay?
Yes.
Okay, because earlier we were, we were talking around 30, but, but you're okay with 50?
Yeah, Gary and I met on Friday, and, um, after much discussion, there are sufficient funds, I emailed you guys the balances in the Host Fund, and even though, um, there's not enough budgeted for this year, we can transfer, like Gary said.
Tim and I also sit on that committee. I originally thought 50 was a good number. I think that, uh, um, the committee, uh, is doing some really good work. $50,000, step in the right direction, 1,000 would impress. Try to get the 50,000. I would, uh, make a motion to transfer $50,000 for the town manager and clerk treasurer's suggestions to the redevelopment committee.
Second. Okay, we have a second. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Thank you.
Spend it all in one place.
I don't think we will.
Thank you. Yeah. Ordinance 12, 2018, methods of payment. Jenny?
We, um, have been accepting credit card payments for events that the park has, and, um, the police department has started having a golf outing the last several years. This year, Matt Oliphant requested that we start receiving, um, credit card payments for players to play, and for donations as well. And in order to, um, be able to accept those type of donations and payments, this ordinance is to establish that we will receive, um, electronic funds transfers, as well as credit card payments and ACHs. So, this is just authorizing the town to accept those different forms.
Uh, you're okay with this? You like this?
Yes.
Does this make life a lot easier for you?
It does.
Okay, if we want to deal with this tonight, we'll.
Move that we suspend the rules to act on ordinance 12.
I have a motion and a second to suspend rules. Question?
Who seconded it? I'm sorry.
All in favor of, uh, suspending the rules? Signify by saying aye. Aye. All right, so, ordinance 12, 2018, and ordinance to amend the Danville Town Code, Title III Administration to Add Chapter 36 Authorized Payments, Methods of Payments to and from the municipality, uh, but this also go for the Parks Department as well, for like the pool and dacks? So, this could be a very good thing. Is there a cost to do this?
Up to the town.
Okay, great. Any other questions? Okay, on a motion.
Mr. President, make a motion, we approve ordinance number 12, 2018, ordinance to amend the Danville Town Code, Title III Administration to Add Chapter 36 Authorized Methods of Payment to and from the municipality.
Got a motion. I've got a second. I've got a second for Mr. Nguyen. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Let's take those credit cards.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The Act, I mean, has authorization?
Well, we had authorization, but we didn't have per se a policy or an ordinance.
Okay, uh, Mr. Pedo, ordinance 18, 2018, the golf cart amendment.
See, this doesn't have anything about 36. Did we decide not to worry about 36?
No, we had enough lights on 36.
Okay.
Just to bring in part of the town that wasn't, didn't have access, that's what this is for.
Okay. Any discussion about ordinance number 18? We need to suspend the rules for this one as well? We didn't bring it up last time. Uh, we tabled it. So, suspend it. If you want to deal with this tonight, otherwise it's just been introduced, and we'll move on.
Motion, we suspend the rules.
Got a motion to suspend rules by Jim? I've got a second by Tom. All those in favor of suspending rules signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, rules are suspended. Fact.
Make a motion to, uh, pass the amendment to the ordinance?
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Uh, for those of you that haven't seen this before, this just allows crossings, uh, at signalized intersections, and also includes non-signalized intersections of Clinton Street, Mill Street, and Lincoln Street, crossing on 39. Otherwise, you'd be stranded on your golf cart. All right. All those in favor of ordinance number 18, 2018, to allow us to cross various places, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, 5-0. Let's start crossing streets. All right. Yeah. Santa Claus mailbox, Mr. Nguyen?
Uh, aye, as well as a few others, were tagged and opposed by Rocky Walker, uh, our resident Danville Santa Claus, who stands it on the corner of Washington and Maine, through November and December, waving to cars, and taking pictures, and talking to kids at no cost, does this on his own. If we could put a mailbox of some sort there, uh, close to him, to allow children to put their letters to Santa in there when they come to see him. Uh, I went up there last Thursday evening and looked, and then Ray and I talked today. We have a spot up there that is wide open where a tree used to be, where we could put a pole in and a box. So, what I'm asking is twofold, one, to get permission to do that, and two, that we pay for the mailbox. Don't necessarily have a cost for that yet, but since we're a ways out from when he'd be up there, uh, we could look at some different mailbox types, but the ones that I saw, uh, were all under about $300.
And who would maintain this mailbox? Just Rocky, just, Santa just take these letters that?
I think Santa would take them.
Kill the mystery here.
And there's a few.
Kids, if you're watching, there really is a Santa Claus.
There's a few individuals that have reached out to say they would like to help Rocky to answer these letters.
Oh.
Could be something really neat for the town, and, uh, I think the mailbox would be under $200, we could, uh, get it for that easily. Something very positive for the town and the kids.
You know if there's anything in the park, Winter Wonderland, do they have? Don't have anything like that, okay, so this is something unique. Other discussion?
Their pigeon from Watermelon Patch has had one out the last year for sure, maybe two years, but, and she mentioned that she would be putting it out again, but that doesn't mean we can't do one this town.
What's unique about this is it ties Rocky to it being, you know, our Danville Santa, and the space to put the pole and the box is right there by where he stands, so it's convenient for anyone coming to visit him and to stop by there.
Other thoughts?
Good ideas?
Does the post office?
They do, they do.
Yeah. And this just allows the people that aren't going to the post office, hand on the square, it would be kind of cool, wouldn't it? Say we give it a chance. Uh, where would we get the funding? Each?
The host would be fine.
I, I think for a couple hundred, so.
And I'll work with Ray to get it put up and approved.
They've got a thumbs up in the back. Santa's number one helper and elf. Make a motion.
Make, uh, Mr. President, make a motion that we, uh, approve, um, going forward with purchasing a mailbox, use up on the square during the holiday season with Rocky.
Funding coming from?
Funding coming from HOCS.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second for Santa's mailbox. Any other further discussion? All of those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Wrenches? Great, motion passes. All right, phase two. Don't go spoiling our secret now. Phase two, we've got department reports. Water, you're up first.
Uh, first thing we've been working on is, uh, been trying to keep up with, uh, Dick Wicker on the asset management, trying to stay ahead of him, marking valves, hydrants, near pits with flags, he goes back behind us and pulls them as he locates them with his GPS. Been doing quite a bit of that, and working on trying to change the fire hydrant out to government center, it's an old Kennedy, just waiting on a domestic four-by-six reducer to, uh, possibly get that changed this week. Uh, last week, we managed to get two water services, uh, replaced on West Main Street during backyards, went ahead and did both of them while we were back there, one of them was leaking, I'll remember if we have to be back there, landscaping will probably be in the spring on those. And lastly, uh, we've been trying to finish up our meter changeout program this year, this month, we're currently, I think, on South Cross Street, working our way north to West Mill, up to, uh, Broadway Street. I think we've got somewhere between 400 and 500 change this year. I think when the weather holds out, we may get some more in next month.
Any questions? All right, wastewater, Jerry.
Good evening, I just have two things to note. We, uh, closed out our construction permit for chemical phosphorus removal, and we should see our new draft permit and PDS permit. We'll have 30 days to comment on that.
Any questions? Any overflow? No. Okay, thank you. Fire Department, Maury.
I've provided you our monthly report for September. Be happy to go any, over any questions you might have, while you're looking at that. I will let you know that we have finished up Fire Prevention Week, um, it's been a success. We explored the opportunity of going into the middle school, and, uh, it was well received. We also have, uh, initiated a joint hiring process with, uh, Washington Township Avon Fire Department and the Brownsburg Fire Territory. Uh, it saves us all some money and time by, uh, doing a joint hiring process, uh, we get more applicants when they know that there are three different organizations that are looking for employees. So, uh, that's kind of exciting to be able to do that. Said, if there's any questions, uh, answer any of them.
Questions for Chief Maury?
How many physicians are we hiring?
Right now, I have two. I've got a paramedic and an EMT that felt the grass was greener somewhere else.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Mark.
I've, uh, give all the council members a copy of the monthly report for September. While you guys are finding that, I'm also going to bring up, the police department would like an endorsement of the board trick-or-treat hours. This year, it falls on December, see, the 31st is on a Wednesday, I was thinking 6:00 p to 8:30 p for trick-or-treat time, kind of stays in line with the other communities in our county. We're just looking for an endorsement from you guys, make sure that you guys are okay with that before we put it out. If you guys have any discussion on the times and the length of it, before we put something out.
Six to eight thirty, everything, everybody good? Sounds good to me.
Sounds good. Okay, we'll get that put out. We'll also have extra patrol that night in the neighborhoods. As far as the stats go, our total runs are down 175, we had a total of 674 last month. Our total arrests are up 10 from the last month, our domestic runs are down, it's actually yearly low, we only had nine.
Good.
So, that's a good sign for us. Any other questions you guys have on the stats itself?
Questions for? All right.
Before I get out of here, I want to thank, uh, Danville Soccer, the girls soccer, just a soccer note, they won a sectional second in two years, and Danville Football has sectionals this Friday night, so come out and support Danville Football Team. Anything else for the police department?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Um, just very quickly, um, the site plan for the, uh, Wabash Valley Power Substation was approved at the Plan Commission meeting last Monday, so that will be going forward. I believe they had a pre-con meeting today out there on site, and that will also include the roadway that's going to be a fancy driveway, as our engineer likes to say, that will be serving the site. Um, the street will be designed to town standards, so that at some point in the future, when the county wants to dedicate it, it will be built to town standards, and we can accept it. But for now, it's just going to remain a drive to serve the substation site, so, want to let you know about that. Um, also wanted to thank you for the funding for the RDC. That group has been meeting diligently and putting plans together to actually be able to move forward and do some exciting things for redevelopment, so thank you for that. And then lastly, thank you for your time tonight for the work-study. I know it was a little chilly taking our tour, but I hope you found it, uh, enlightening, and we appreciate your efforts.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Questions for? Great, thank you very much. Stormwater?
Barry.
You used your time already.
I've got more for you.
Just don't talk about mold.
It's not mold, let's talk about fuel tanks. You want to talk about fuel tanks? So, on the square, um, we put in a new line, a 12-inch storm line for the visitors, it's not for them, but they are having drainage issues, and the only way to, to work that out was for them to replace all their downspouts. There's a little courtyard, I don't know if you guys have been back there, but I'm sure you may or may not have, but you can't get to it from the outside, you got to go through the building, and there's this little courtyard, it's probably about six-by-six triangle, and all their downspouts go in there. Well, the, the neighbor to the north was catching all the water, and they could not figure out how that water was going down the ground, you know, sometimes I, I don't know where our water goes in this town, you have to dig it up and find it. Um, but we put that line in so they would have an outlet, and our responsibility as a stormwater department is to provide outlets to people that need an outlet via a sump pump, or in this situation, they are downspouts and a sump pump. So, as we were putting that in, we came up to, uh, the hair shop, um, I can't remember what the name of it is, but, uh, once we got to there, everything was going good, um, we found a lot, we found a couple issues, the, the wastewater and the stormwater worked together and corrected those both. So, this line is also going to remove an I and I from the wastewater department, a big one. Um, eight-inch pipe running full when it was raining the other day, so that's how much water he's going to get off of his system and not have to treat. So, it was twofold of us doing this project, and that's why Jerry was glad to help, um, and assist in whatever way he could. But as we came up the hill, we found a 500-gallon tank, and once we dug that up, we smelled gas, fuel oil, I'm not sure exactly what it was. So we had to cut the top of it open, dig out all the pea gravel, and then remove the tank out. So that was all fine and good. We were done there, so we moved on up another 12 feet, and we're digging, and we find a 1,000-gallon tank. So at this point, we're like, oh my gosh. It's like, does it end? But so instead of taking it out at that point, we went on by it because if we would have dug it out, it was further up under the sidewalk. We might have lost the sidewalks out in front of the businesses there, and we weren't prepared to put those back in a timely manner. So we put the pipe in, put the catch basin in, and where the engineer drew the drawing for the structure to be installed, I was concerned the whole time that it was going to be in the way. It was sitting right on top of the sanitary lateral. So we had to move it downstream a little bit, but we got it in. Everything's good. Today, we went in and removed that tank, cut the top of it out, got the tank out of the ground, and we excavated all of the material. This is what IDIM would require, but since they weren't full of oil, IDIM was not needed to be called out. Typically, if that has fuel oil in it, you have to call and make sure it's not leaking. They take a 50-foot radius, take core samples and test it. If it comes back positive, you got to dig it all out. You spread it out on the ground and let it evaporate. So it's evaporating down at the public workplace that you visited this afternoon. But it wasn't that bad. I don't want to make it worse than it was. So other than that, that project drug out, but it's a good project because we're also, as we put that in, we, I know, you know, I noticed how much water Washington Street takes in. So that catch basin is going to catch a lot of that water before it has time to go down to Clinton Street and pond in the road. So it's really a good project, expensive one, but a good one. The next thing I'd like to talk about is ponds. Out at Commerce Park, there's a pond that every time it rains, we have a little beaver friend out there digging away while we're sleeping at night, cutting down trees and plugging up storm pipe. So the issue here is, is usually the town does not maintain ponds. And I have talked to Mr. Aiken. We've talked and talked and talked until we're sick of talking to each other about ponds. But what that does is it plugs up the pond and it backs up to everybody that's paying a stormwater bill. So I took it upon my own to hire a contractor. We dug it out, got the pond drained. But then I also found out that we are having troubles locating plans for that pond when it was originally constructed. We do not have an easement going across the private property, but that person is willing to help us, let us work in that area so that we do have an outfall. That's what made you guys aware that we're spending some time and money into what may look like a private pond, but it's not. That pipe that goes from the pond to the field is the town of Danville is to maintain. We accepted it into the town. We got to maintain it. Just like any other pipes that's within our right-of-way, I treat them as the town's because if we do that, we now can put those in the way they're supposed to be put in and size them accordingly. If you get somebody putting their own pipe in, they're going to put in a six-inch tile, and it's going to be plugged up in a month. So if I can get rid of that beaver and get rid of all the trees around that pond, we won't have a drainage problem at Commerce Park. But if you drive out by there and you're looking around, if you look in the ditches, you'll see a lot of water. It's because, and I won't go too deep, but it's because there should be a secondary pipe that keeps a normal pool and then an overflow. Right now, we're working at the overflow because the pond leveling system is not functioning. That's all I have.
Beaver on the project?
Absolutely, 100% not. His pelts up for sale right now.
November 15th. Not that I know this, but...
I'm glad you told me that because I didn't know there was a season for him.
Yes. Well, you can get a nuisance trapper to come out there and take...
Well, he's a nuisance. I can tell you that.
I sent somebody your name and number. I don't know if you got a call yet.
He called me.
Okay.
I got two people on that hunt. They're going to take care of it for free. They like hunting beavers, I guess. But yeah, I, they're keeping the pipe open, but every time it rains, we have to go out there and kind of scratch that pipe open to get it to drain. So just so you guys know, in case somebody asks, we're not working on a private pond. We're trying to keep the drainage ditch open.
Any other questions for Barry?
The petrol tanks, where do you think they come from?
I was told they were probably put there back when that was a Packard dealer. There was a Ford dealer in the Raiders fabric, and then there was a Packer dealer to the south. I'm assuming that's...
Betty has the plan map for 2020. We were just looking. They, along with the local court.
You found the fuel tanks?
Yes.
If I would have known, who to talk to. I guess I'm going to have to talk to Betty every time I dig in town of Danville.
A fire insurance map?
Yeah.
Interesting.
That is really interesting. Can I see that?
Actually, because if we can start tapping into that, and Ray will attest to this, every once in a while, you come across a line, you have no idea, right?
Well...
There's a lot of them, you know, but there's a few of them that...
Ray didn't go back that far, unfortunately. He knows, he's got a wealth of knowledge.
He was trained well, though.
He's got a wealth of knowledge. I go to that hole quite a bit, but there was no help this time, other than, other than the Public Works helping out and giving us their equipment whenever we needed and a hand. So I thank the Public Works Department, Ray and his guys. So they help out every time I have a problem, and I appreciate it. So, but that's why we're all in it together. We'll continue to dig and find little artifacts in town.
Glickman's Fer Emporium on Old 36 will take care of your beaver.
Do you, pardon me?
Glickman's Fer Emporium on Old 36, they'll take care of your beaver.
Well, I'm hoping it happens pretty quick because every time it rains, I don't sleep. But yeah.
All right. Anything else? Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Public Works. Ray.
This week's kind of been a short week. We've done a little birmingham along some of the new pavement. We've done some blacktop patching, started sweeping some streets, trying to get ahead of the leaf pickup. Yellow paint went on some of the new curbs that we did for Barry and his projects. We hauled out some material from the debris bins down there, as you all seen, down there trying to keep the storage area down there clean. The new diesel tank has been installed down there. That was one thing that I didn't point out while you guys were there, but the new diesel tank is installed. We've done some cleaning around the shop. We started the tree holes last week and worked some more on them today on the square, trying to get ready for fall planting of trees. We're planning and working towards getting the leaf pickup equipment ready, and we have already been with Laura to work on getting the Christmas lights ordered, to have them in and ready to put up. And I want to thank each one of you for your time tonight. It means the world to my department. Thank you.
Anything for Ray? All right. Thank you, sir. All right. Last and certainly not least, Parks Department. Anyone from Park?
Those on vacation.
Good for him. Anything big there? Any Blanton House news? Anything from the public? Now, had your chance. Okay. Gary.
Interlocal agreement between the town of Danville and the local state for the additional RO. She brought it out. Also, Dr. Schaefer, we're working full corporation on the lease for the upstairs. And Dr. Schaefer's got a meeting set up with this staff to review. They're looking at improvements down upstairs. We're unsure. We think maybe it's carpet and things, but we've got to wait until inspection. One thing that the Public Works people forgot to mention was that we had an $18,000 credit with Mauser Beavers. What do we do with that? Well, you can't spend it yourselves, but we can pay you with it. So yes, we look at the parking lot. So maintains that parking lot for church that owns it, use of it. Pay that lot. Only going to cost us $21. So it'll look pretty good, should anyway.
And Ray's got a big thumbs up on that one, so thank you. Will they grind it and then pave? All right. Tom? Dennis?
A couple things. We have these big meetings with a lot of things, and can we start getting our packets tabbed? We're not struggling up here to find each subject each. There's a lot of them. Right. So we know. Then the football team, caveat to Assistant Chief Hilton, big game Friday night, first round of sectionals, play a team with a much better record, but we're a much better team. The more people out there, the better. And as I was up here, I got a, I texted Santa, and Santa wanted to, on behalf of Santa, he wanted to thank the council for letting him have his mailbox.
You can text Santa?
I got skills.
You've got connections on that. Anything else? Yeah.
Same thing, tagging on with what Hilton said, the volleyball team also won sectionals weekend, yeah. Play Saturday at noon, I believe.
Got a volleyball dad.
Yes, that Danville.
I've got nothing. It's fall. Freeze tonight, frost tonight, so cover up your veg, your delicate plants. Other than that, claim docket. Move to approve. Got a motion for the claim docket? I've got a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Good evening. We are adjourned.